I now call to order the February 24th, 2020 Meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:00. Let the minutes show that the board was present with all members in attendance with Mr. Trout, Mr. Warwick being absent. Please rise if the invocation is to be given by Ms. Carroll. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our next flag to be given by Mr. Mixon.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight to represent you and to represent our community in this meeting. We ask your blessings upon all things that we decide or make official tonight, and we ask that all things we do glorify you. Be with our first responders and our educators and our students and other staff, and help them to always keep you in the forefront of everything they do. Forgive us of our sins. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
For the leaders to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Part of Texas by our legislative decisions, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item two on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up. We have two. So up front, we're gonna go... It's Anna. How are you?
Good.
Good. So come forward. I'm gonna read a small little open forum statement that I need to make, so I'm gonna read that to you, and then I'm gonna give you the floor. Sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the board encourages comments from the citizens of the district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or representative of a group may do so at this time. The board asks that the comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board cannot discuss any issues that are not posted on the agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board will adopt complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administration level and prompt a resolution of complaints and concerns. This policy is on our district website. So current time for you is 6:03. How are you?
Good.
Good. You've got the floor.
I would like to address the problem, at least on my bus. I don't know about any other children, but it is about misbehaving children and that they are not being written up for their actions. And it is causing problems for the children who are behaving. Now, there are many kids who are behaving, but the loudness and problematic kids are overbearing and are distracting the bus driver. And it's causing us to have to smash together three to a seat, and some kids are falling out of their seats because we have to do that. We also have a lot of kids on our bus. The kids aren't... Kids who need to be written up aren't being written up, and that is very problematic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was very great of you to come up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next is Ms. Richardson. How are you?
I'm good. Actually have something for each one of y'all.
Okay, our current time is gonna be 6:04. Thank you.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am coming to you because we have a problem here. I have a child who thoroughly enjoyed school till this year. I have a child who eight weeks ago came to me and told me he wanted to commit suicide, and he wanted to kill his bullies at school at Wyom. I immediately took him to the hospital, where he stayed in a cycle for 48 hours. He is now on psychotropic medication and in therapy because bullying is not handled in New Caney ISD. It is not handled properly. The same bus that this young lady spoke about is the bus that my son rides, Bus 322, that goes to Cumberland Crossing. My son has been hit, has been punched in the privates, has been exposed to, has been called names, has been assaulted, has been... I can't even go through the things. He has come home crying. He no longer wants to do his work. We left after sixth grade. My husband and I taught at Porter High School. I taught for five years. Absolutely loved this district. I thought I was gonna be buried here. But I had to make the tough decision to leave this district for my son. My husband and I left, and we went to Umla ISD so that our son could go to a different school other than Wyom. We left. He had a great seventh grade year. Didn't work out for us in Umla. We had to change districts again. So he had to go back to Wyom. He cried for the first six weeks of school because he was traumatized by knowing he was gonna have to walk those halls at Wyom again. And it is a shame that we cannot get a hold of what's going on on Bus 322. I personally have talked to the parent of one of these kids, and the parent said, "It's just boys being boys." And I looked at her and I said, "Then I'll see you in court." Now, I want to know when New Caney ISD is gonna step up and acknowledge that we have a child that's willing to take his life or other people's lives, because if my son takes his life or others' lives, I'm holding you guys accountable. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Item three on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under authority Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 for the purpose of personal matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. Current time, 6:07. The board ends the closed meeting at 7:08. We now reconvene in open session. Item four on the agenda is recognition. Ms. Gutierrez is up front from Brookwood Forest Elementary.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come up today and share some of the amazing stuff and students who make up Brookwood Forest Elementary. The first person that I'm going to recognize today is Mrs. Donna Kaver. She is our head custodian at Brookwood Forest. She has been in New Caney for 15 years. I've had the opportunity to work with Ms. Donna for several years now, both at Brookwood Forest and when I was a teacher at Oakley. Ms. Donna is dedicated to keeping our school clean and looking beautiful, but above all, she truly cares about our kids. Often during breakfast, you will find her talking or checking on students. Students enjoy helping and talking to her in the cafeteria, and they will often go and play dirt with somebody they get to tell her. Thank you, Ms. Donna, for maintaining our school beautiful and being an amazing part of our team. The next person I'm going to recognize is Mrs. Carolyn Embry. Mrs. Embry teaches fourth grade math. She has 21 years of teaching experience, and she's been in New Caney for three years. Ms. Embry is an amazing teacher. She's the kind of teacher that I would have wanted to have on up in the fourth grade, especially in math. She's a team player. She's dedicated, and she cares for each and every one of her students. When you walk into our classroom, you will find a community of learners who have a growth mindset, who care about each other, and believe that they can achieve anything. Ms. Embry has fostered an environment where students believe in themselves and are willing to take risks to learn and grow. Ms. Embry cares about each one of her students. Thank you, Ms. Embry, for all that you do for our students and for our staff. We truly are blessed to have you at Brookwood Forest. The next person I'm going to recognize today is Mrs. Claudia Ramirez. Mrs. Ramirez is our pre-K care professional. She's been a care professional for 19 years, and I also have the pleasure of working with her at Oakley when she was a care professional there. She does an amazing job working with our pre-K students, and as you all can know, pre-K can be very challenging. She does such a good job working with them. She is dedicated and goes above and beyond to make sure that our students are taken care of, that they feel happy and safe. When you walk into a classroom that she's working in, you will always find her sitting with all the students. She's always working with them, sitting with them, helping them, making sure that they have everything that they need. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, for helping our pre-K students grow every single day. The next person I'm going to recognize is why we're all here, our students. Our student that I'm recognizing tonight is Mrs. Amyia Hernandez. She is our fifth grade student, and she is in dual language. Amyia's school has some wonderful qualities, and we would be here all day if I had to describe them all. But if I had to narrow them down, there's a couple that I would say Amyia is compassionate, she's responsible, and she's caring. Amyia is very compassionate with her classmates. She's always sticking in on them to make sure that they have everything that they need. And when she sees that someone is having a hard day or hard times, she's always asking them to make sure that they are okay. One of the things that came up a couple of weeks ago is one of her teachers was sick and she didn't feel good. Even with her teachers, she's always caring for them. She's always there. She asks her teacher, "Are you sure you're okay? Is everything okay?" She's a wonderful student, and she cares about all of the students, all of our fourth grade students that are there. I asked her earlier today what she wanted to be when she grew up, and she told me she wanted to write a book, and she wanted to be an author. So I told her to make sure she gives us coffee. I can't wait to see how she blossoms. And our last person that I'm going to recognize today is Ms. Evelyn Metz. Ms. Evelyn is our child nutrition manager. She just joined us this year, but she's been in New Caney for several years. She truly loves our students, and our teachers love her as well. I asked Ms. Theda if she could share some insight or some background information on her, and this is what Ms. Evelyn had to say. She said, "She is well-deserving person to receive this recognition tonight. Evelyn and I have worked together for approximately 18 years, and she is dedicated, self-motivated, and self-starter. She never disappoints with the quality of food for our students and is willing to try new ideas. Evelyn stepped out of her comfort zone this year when I challenged her to move sites and has done an amazing job. I can always count on Evelyn to be here daily, and she's had almost perfect attendance for numerous years. Ms. Evelyn is an asset to New Caney ISD, and I appreciate her passion for New Caney and child nutrition. Thank you, Ms. Evelyn, for all that you do for the students at Brookwood Forest."
Good evening. So tonight, we're gonna recognize some of our fantastic Oakley Rocket. We're gonna start with our care professional, Ms. Jill Askew. Jill is a woman of many talents. She's currently our library aide, but she's also served some time as our backup nurse and our receptionist, so she really can do it all. She's flexible, always willing to step up whenever we need her. She has this amazing calming effect that I don't know that there's anything that can really rattle her, and she's always smiling. Jill is a great asset to our team and is a model representation of what it means to go above and beyond, or whatever it may be. Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Carol Way, as you go, and I totally said I was saying wrong, but it's very difficult, so I apologize, Ms. Carol Way. She's our kitchen manager. She has worked very hard this year to make our child nutrition serving area welcoming and positive for all of our students, staff, and parents. She's new to our campus this year, and I know that myself and my APs have been back there, and I can tell you there's no way we could do it, and you've seen that. She makes sure that our students are given healthy nutritious choices, and that they're served quickly, and they can enjoy their meals. She routinely communicates and builds partnerships with both the students, our staff, and her staff. She's open to new ideas and always willing to try new things and do whatever it needs to be done to take care of our kids. It's obvious that she has a love for her job, and we thank you for that. Okay, next, we're gonna recognize Ms. Maria Rodriguez, who is one of our evening custodians. Maria is a hard worker, always reliable. She aims to please. Anytime we ask anything of her, she's smiling, "Yes, ma'am, anything." And she's always working. If you wander through the building, you see her working all the time, and her work definitely doesn't go unnoticed, even though it's happening at night. We're so grateful for your commitment to Oakley, and we thank you for all your hard work, Maria. Okay, next, we're gonna recognize Ms. Lial. Ms. Lial is a first grade dual-language teacher at Oakley. This is her second year with us. She also has three beautiful girls who attend our school, so we're blessed to have them as well. Her and her family, husband included, they attend every single event that we have at school and outside of school, which is a huge commitment because we have a lot of things going on. She's also one of our biggest advocates for parent and community involvement. Ms. Lial just started a new volunteer program. It's called our Oakley Rocket Tears, and she did this just on her own because she wanted to get more parents there to help the teachers. So they have these great little reusable bags, and all the teachers fill them with things that they need to have done, and we have parents come up and volunteer to get this stuff done once a month, and that's all because Ms. Lial started that. So that's an awesome thing that she's done. Ms. Lial is also a UIO coach for us, and she coached two different teams this year, and she coached last year. So we are definitely blessed to have her on our teaching staff at Oakley. She's always positive and has a candy attitude for everything. So thank you for your dedication, Ms. Lial. And last but not least is Abigail Mulligan. She is a fifth grader with us. She goes above and beyond. Her teachers actually nominated her among her peers, so that's a great thing. She's a model student. She looks for ways to help others in everything she does. She's a role model for her peers. She helps her classmates, and she always has a positive attitude. She's also an avid reader. She was one of our top readers for our last Rita Talk that we did. Do you remember how many minutes it was?
3,017.
3,017 minutes she read over a month, so she loves to read. She's a member of our Rocket Choir and maintains honor for her academics. She's a student who represents our Oakley Essential Five by being respectful, being the best that she can be, learning from mistakes, always being honest, and always following corrections. So, great job, Abigail.
Up next is Tom Hayne, Sorters Mill.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. Just to recognize our staff members at Sorters Mill Elementary. Just to receive recognition early, great job, well done. We're very grateful for this opportunity. So first, we would like to recognize a member of our support staff at SME. I met Anna Aaron for the first time at New Caney ISD's care professional job fair, and from the moment I met her, I knew that she would be the perfect fit for our school. And everything that stood out from our first meeting has helped her. Hiring her did not come easy, though. There were several other schools that were hot on her trail. And so we had to fight for Anna, but it was worth it. Anna has a love for students that is felt from the moment they see her in mornings. Whether she is at car rider duty in the rain greeting students at the front door or starting her morning at breakfast duty, she makes it a point to help our students know that they are loved. She is complimentary and always welcomes our students with a warm smile. Along with her full-time job in our science lab, she has stepped in to help third through fifth grade students as an additional support. Her kind and giving heart, as well as her drive to continue learning in the classroom so that she can one day be a teacher, are just a few of the things that set Anna apart and make her exceptional. Anna is a joy to work with and has been a valuable employee at Sorters Mill. Congratulations, Anna. Next, I would like to recognize Maria Garza. She is part of our custodial team. Maria has a humble and kind heart and is consistent and reliable. Our head custodian, Tammy Fields, had these things to say about Maria's work ethic. She goes above and beyond what is required and is always willing to step in and help. She works her assigned area at school, but is always willing to help out other custodians on campus as well. Maria's kind heart goes beyond the doors of SME. She is a wife, mother, friend, and grandmother. She is actively involved in her church and can be found giving out backpacks to the homeless, visiting nursing homes, or raising money to help others in need. She is truly a person with a heart for service. We are grateful at SME not only for her kind, caring, and helpful ways, but also for her heart of gold. From our auxiliary staff, Elizabeth Galván came to us this year as our new cafeteria manager, and in many ways, she has turned the culture of the cafeteria around by training her staff with very high expectations and kindness towards students as a main focus, including leading her staff to create a positive experience as students walk through the cafeteria line. On days where we have extra people on campus or a change in schedule, she steps up to the plate to ensure that her staff is working quickly and efficiently. Our students and staff appreciate Elizabeth, and we are thankful for the ways that she provides food to warm our bellies and smiles to warm our hearts. Debbie Needham said, "As a first-year manager, she has shown exemplary skills and dedication to the staff and students, and she strives for excellence in all areas." I couldn't give any more. I would consider our next staff member, teacher Amy Gilbert, as a pillar to much of our success at Sorters Mill Elementary. In Amy's first-grade classroom, you can feel the love that she has for her students and her joy for teaching as soon as you walk into the room. Amy is a tremendous leader. She mentors other teachers, rises above negativity, and she can find the silver lining even on the toughest days. She has even stepped in to mentor and lead teachers on other campuses. To further show Mrs. Gilbert's passion for teaching, she volunteered to give up her conference time to tutor students who need extra help with their work in an upper-grade level. On learning walks, Amy's room is often chosen as a room to visit because her methods for growing her students are praised by teachers, parents, staff, and administration. Her success also spills out of her classroom door and spreads to those passing by her room. I am grateful to have Amy's positivity, joy-filled laughter, and drive for excellence on our campus, and I look forward to growing her as a leader. Congratulations, Amy. There's one more that I would like to recognize this evening. This is actually our student. We have our student Aiden Estrada. And I do have to tell you, Aiden is not here tonight because he actually is at Pine Cove. And bless his heart because he has the privilege of attending there. When he heard that he was going to be recognized, honestly, he really didn't have a desire to leave early. They have such a blast there, which is fantastic. But I do have to tell you, Aiden is really an incredible little guy, and he is truly a leader on our campus that deserves some recognition, so that's why I'd like to share this with you tonight. He is an exceptional student and constantly models leadership, both in character and in academics. As a member of Student Leadership Council, Aiden always goes above and beyond to serve his teachers and classmates. He looks for what needs to be done and takes the initiative without expectation of recognition. Academically, Aiden is always seeking to learn and be challenged. He pushes himself toward excellence in each subject, fully engaged in lessons, and always asking questions. He is a true role model for his classmates and a delight to his teachers. We know that God has big plans for Aiden as he heads into middle school next year, and I can't wait to see what he's going to accomplish. Thank you so much for your time.
Item five on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members. Okay, up next, item six on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Happy World, it's National CTE Month, and so we appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the great things happening in New Caney ISD, sorry, in our CTE department. This weekend, I was at a wedding in Luckin, and one of the senior teachers from Luckin High School came up to me and said that he had just gotten back from a competition, and he said he thought about us because over and over at the awards, he heard of New Caney. And he said that he's new to CTE, but that he already realizes that our kids and our teachers, sponsors, are really leaders in a lot of these areas. And that would not take place. You know Warren very well. He is very passionate about CTE and our kids. He puts a lot of heart and soul into what he does, and we're so happy to have Gabriela with us because she works so hard and she's so dedicated. And so they're a really great team, and so we're gonna share a few highlights with you about CTE, and they may step in for clarification or answering questions. The first page, I think y'all have it, is on the screen. The programs of study were finalized. There are 14 clusters and 25 programs of study. Added areas include commercial photography and refining and chemical processes. On the second page is a list of industry-based certifications. 239 were submitted in our fall pink submission. That's a lot. And if you look at the list below there, the ones that were listed are listed. Okay, on the next page, you've heard a little about this, but this all gets started, aerospace gets started this August. George Dady at Porter High School will be overseeing and teaching the aerospace program, and they will be working to build a plane. It'll take them about two years. So hopefully by August 2022, our students will have completed that project. We're really, really excited about that, and you can see pictures of Warren and Brooke trying to find out. They flew it out to Conroe's airport for us to look at. The next few pages are updates on the tiny home progress. As you know, our kids are working on a tiny home that will be completed by Battle Line picking on and getting in the fall. And so the first page tells you the teachers that are working on the project and shows you some of the start of the project. The next page, this is where they're installing plumbing, and you can see what our kids are working on. And we have contractors. We have contractors that come in, teach our kids, and work with them and with the teachers. And so on each page, the sponsors are listed. And then on the next page is when the subfloors... Before the subfloor was put in, the layer of spray foam insulation that was put in, and then the framing that took place. On the next page, we have pictures of framing. And the next page... And the next page has a picture of the progress. Porter High School students and Chesmoor framers completed the final dry-in over the last few days. They're going to transfer back to Ucany High School this week. Next phases include electrical, plumbing, insulation, insulation, and other interior work to get the home ready for auction in the fall before our battle line.
The board's going to share a little bit about this process technology, something that... Process technology is a program with Longshore College that we're looking at doing, and we're, at this moment, we're trying to gather the interest from the students, to see how many students that we have that are interested in it. It is a very rigorous program with Longshore College's full credit. It involves a lot of chemistry, physics, and some high-level math. So we're trying to find those right kids that are going to fit into that program. It's a two-year program, so we're looking at our tenth graders right now and counselors that are being with them, and building a list of students that might be interested in it. And then we're looking at the students individually to make sure that they can be successful with it, because it is very highly rigorous. It is at Longshore College's facility out on the San Houston Bowlway in the Summerwood area, so it works out really well. The program is first thing in the morning, and they would get out of the Longshore College class with about forty minutes to spare to be able to get to Ucany High School for their second period classes, second or sixth period classes. So it works out really well for them to be able to do that. But they have a great facility out there. Dr. Weatherly and I visited the facility back in the fall, and they are anxious and excited about Ucany High School doing that program.
Do you have any idea, Warren, on what the salary, starting salaries, or do you get certified or are students going to certify?
It's in the seventy and eighty thousand dollar range.
After a two-year program.
After a two-year program.
And graduates.
Yes.
Make that thirty dollars.
And, I mean, luckily, I've got a son that just started with Bolero in this job, and the overtime that they get, I mean, they're well in those six quarters with the overtime that they get. So it's a great program. If we can gather those students that are really interested in it, we're really excited about it.
You got any questions, Bryce?
Thank you.
And Brooke and Warren prepared a bag for y'all to celebrate CTE Month, so that's what's in front of me.
Thank you so much.
Item seven on the agenda is consent calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, and consideration of personnel reports. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Item eight on the agenda is a consideration of full-day pre-kindergarten exemption waiver, presented by Ms. Shaw.
Okay, since last summer, when House Bill Three was approved, and the requirement came for all districts in the same places to have full-day pre-K, we came to offer that information, and we've been sharing it throughout the year. And we talked about our intention to file a waiver because the law was immediately enacted, which meant we had to have full-day pre-K starting in August, which is a quick turnaround for us. And so the waiver, however, from TDA was not released until January, so it will be retroactive. It has to be completed by March second. So we have worked with pre-K childcare centers. As we've talked before in our district, we've shared information with them. There was also an RFP posted in November, and we had one childcare center that completed that RFP, but it is Keywood Monastery, and they are not in our school system. They are in other state school systems. So we're ready to make a partner with someone that's not in our system. So anyway, that was the only RFP that was returned. And so we're asking you, on March the second, we would like to apply for the exemption waiver, which will be for, hopefully, three years, retroactive, so this year, plus two more. Part of the plan, and what we've worked on, is to pilot full-day pre-K on a few of our campuses, just to work with the process. There's transportation, staffing, materials, supplies, paraprofessionals, lots of things that we need to work through. And so after visiting some of our principals, with Deanna Michelle, about them are granted somewhere most of our kids are, where we feasibly think we can, we have the facility space. At this time, we're thinking of piloting full-day pre-K at Dogwood Elementary, Crippan Elementary, Tola Elementary, and Ucany Elementary. And so this is just the very beginning of that process, so we have a lot to work through of our finance department and transportation, but we would like to file the exemption waiver with TDA for full-day pre-K for the next three years. Any questions, Bryce?
Thank you. Are there any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the full-day pre-kindergarten exemption waiver?
So much.
Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Item nine on the agenda is consideration the approval of CPR zero-two-eight and the amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars to add the standpipe system and all required apparatuses as requested by Montgomery County Fire Marshal Office's bond 2018, keep for crossing. Middle school replacement, project number zero-four-two-two thousand eighteen, presented by Mr. Cowan.
Yes, sir. Now, I've got Brad Hughes here beside me, he is our architect, supporting what is on this project, the IBI, so he can dive into the details if y'all have any questions regarding those. But this change order is essentially due to the height of the building. Basically, what a standpipe system is, is you're putting the fire hydrant all the way up on the inside of the building, and the fire engine, you have to be able to hook up to that, it has to be pressurized to a certain extent as required by the code. So all the things that go into that to make that system happen, that is what we're installing in the building, and that's over here. I assume you've approved the item. Does that change order? Like I said, Mr. Hughes is here to answer any additional questions you have. That's what we're asking for, to get that's approved for this change order on this project.
Did we miss that in the original bid?
Yes, well, it was almost like a gamble we were taking. Codes allow you, they say one thing, it allows an interpretation. The fire marshal and our engineers viewed it two different ways, and after we entered into the permit phase, the timeframe to take, it is response, the fire marshal's response was after the bid, and we fell short on the wrong side. What it would do is increase the construction budget contract a bit, but it's still going to be, we evaluated, had we repeated like we were doing a wood ridge, do the second floor, two-story addition over there, just in steel and concrete and roof, we're still saving money over doing, going three stories as opposed to going that extra expansion over there. So my team did fail to do a thorough check with the fire marshal at the time.
Thank you.
But despite all that, you know, the project is on schedule, budget, everything's still the way it used to be. Yes, it's a very large change order, but overall, the project is still in line and on track for what it needs to be. Any other questions?
Are there any other questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to approve CPR zero-two-eight and the amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand and twelve dollars to add this standpipe system and all required apparatuses as requested by Montgomery County Fire Marshal Office, bond 2018, keep for crossing. Middle school replacement, project number zero-four-two-two thousand eighteen. Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at seven forty.